We're waiting another couple of minutes to get, let Chris hop on. Thanks, everybody for waiting. We'll call the meeting to order at 4:03. The first item on the agenda is the Park and Rec Director. So this was to firm up the, that subcommittee. So after reading the minutes and sort of reviewing the meeting, it, you know, it occurs to me that we're, A, we didn't, we didn't pass, the policy, this new policy is still a work in progress. So we're, it's not, it's not an actual policy yet. My concern is that we've created a lot of subcommittees and are building a cumbersome process. But to get, so the policy is not on the meeting, on the agenda, and that was by design because it wasn't going to, we were really planning to talk about it at the monthly meeting. So we can't discuss the policy. So that's just a long way around to say I have reservations about this, having all these subcommittees for, you know, clerk jobs and attendant jobs. But in order to get through, at least the Park and Rec Subcommittee, we were waiting for Park and Rec to have their meeting to come back. I also am worried about creating a subcommittee of five people and Lynn and I had a quick conversation this afternoon. And I, I think that we should, the motion should be for three members. That's sort of the vein that we've been going in for the other committees. I think a three-member committee is going to be more nimble. It's going to, they're going to be more able to get through all of the tasks that need to get done, looking at the job description, looking at what the last 22 years have looked like. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to create a three-member Subcommittee for the search process for new Park and Rec Director.
We already have three on it, right?
Well, we didn't make a motion at the last meeting.
No, but didn't we have a, did we have a group?
We had talked about a five-member committee, three members of the commission.
There's a motion on the table. So if you're going to discuss.
Thank you, Joyce. I'll second that. So when we last left this, I know Ed, we, we said Ed would be on the committee. That's correct?
Right.
Okay. And then who else was on that? Didn't we assume that Lynn was going to be on it?
Well, it, it.
What, two members of the Park and Rec and one at large?
No, we were talking about three members of the commission, one at large, one board. So Ed, it would be Ed. And then three from Park and Rec and one at large. I didn't get the newsletter out until Saturday. So, but I haven't gotten any responses from anybody. I, I, in talking with Lynn, I think that I should send out a very targeted email, you know, tonight or tomorrow to get that third person. If we, if we agree on this motion to do three people instead of five, Lynn, just want to, Lynn Harrington, we have two Linds on. Just want, want to make sure that you're part of this conversation. When Lynn and I talked, she agreed that it would be okay to have a three-member instead of a five-member. Lynn, do you have any, anything you want to offer?
No, I just, it doesn't matter to me really if we have three or five. I just want to get it together quickly so that we can start the search for the interim.
All right. Why don't, why don't we just leave it at this? Let's leave it at three. And then if indeed someone comes forward and says they would like to serve on the committee, I think we need to respect the fact that A, we put it out and B, they need to be, we can, we can seat them. Does that make sense?
Well, we don't want to add just one more because that would give four.
Well, I, I don't think that honestly it's going to be that challenging. I don't think you have to have an odd number. It's just, we usually do so that there's a note, so you don't have a tie. I would think that if you all couldn't get on the same page, then somebody could abstain and go from there.
We do have three commissioners ready to join. But I don't think they're, I think they'd be okay if two of them didn't, and we just had one commissioner.
So I, I think that they're, whoever they recommend, whoever the commission recommends is, is perfectly reasonable, that we don't have to have another meeting to say who that person is going to be. Their recommendation is who they collectively as the commission recommend.
All right. So we have.
Is going to be the BOF, and then we'll have one at large. And how, you know, like you said, we need to seat that, seat that position either way. And I, I think I can get a newsletter out this evening that just speaks to the, the Park and Rec Subcommittee to see if we can, because it was in a very, very long newsletter.
I'm confused. The motion on the table is for three people for the Subcommittee.
Yep.
One is Ed.
Yep.
And are you recommending two from Park and Recreation?
No.
One, and then, and then one from at large? Okay.
So Ed is seated. Lynn will go back to the commission and they will give us a recommendation of who they want. That person will get seated, doesn't need another extra meeting for us to vote on that person because we're taking the recommendation of the subject matter experts for their representative. And then the only other one that we need to see is a, a member of the public.
So, but just help me understand, so one, you're thinking that three would be for continuity sake with respect to all the other searches, one, and, and for speed, right?
Yep.
Okay. I don't understand speed because we have three members of Park and Rec are ready to serve and Ed. So that's four. So what we're looking for is someone at large who we're looking for already, even if it's three.
And by speed, I mean, it's easier to, to align three schedules, three people's schedules versus five people's schedules. Just makes the committee more.
How important is a person at large?
I, I don't think they're important at all, to be honest with you. The more, you know, it'd be nice, but if it's going to hold this whole process up while we wait another two weeks for someone at large, what's the use?
Right. So my suggestion is we take the three and we just have two from Park and Rec, Ed, and do the three. And if somebody comes from at large, then we can seat them.
Exactly. That's what.
Makes sense?
Yep.
That way we can get it done right now.
Okay. Just for, for transparency purposes, you will now have all three of those Subcommittee members are also members of the commission.
Yeah, I get that. But typically, you know, Ed, as the second selectman is not really a operating member. He's a member of the Board of Selectmen to represent.
Right. Right. But he's also an ex officio in the ordinance or the bylaws, one of the other, an ex officio member of the Park and Rec Commission. The third selectman is.
And are picked two people to serve on the committee. The, the Park and Rec picked the other night, the two people to put on the committee already.
Okay. So who are they?
John volunteered to be on the committee the other night.
They had three.
Right. And then there was another one, but I don't remember who that was. It's in my notes over my.
Katie Simmons. So can we get to Park and Rec to give us their names? And Lynn, are you ready to do that now? Or do you need to go back to Park and Rec?
Say that again? I'm sorry.
Are you, do you feel like you're ready to do the, the two, to have two members assigned now to give us names? Or do you need to go back and have another conversation with them? Because this is now a little bit different from what you guys talked about on Friday night.
Um, I think that we should probably get a special meeting together, you know, just tell them that it'll just be a few minutes because you know, the three will have to hash it out.
Yeah. And I think for fairness.
Yeah.
But we don't need to meet again. We take your two recommendations. All you have to do is email me the two names and then we'll, those two names will be the members.
So let me just ask you guys. Chris and Ed, in the meantime, after the Thursday meeting, it, at the meeting, we chose John, myself and Kate to be the three commission members. We had three members that weren't there. So I emailed them afterwards to ask if they were interested because Kate has some other obligations that might make it difficult, but she said she would do her best. So and I have a lot of extra on my plate with this. So those two of the members that were not at the Thursday meeting have agreed to be on the commission, on the Subcommittee with John. And John would still stay on the Subcommittee. So it would be, we'd have to pick one of those other people. I don't know if we need a, need a meeting for that. That's my question. Or can, can I just email each of them, those two people and say, who wants it more type thing?
Well, either way, you still need to reach back out to your commission members. Right? So for the purposes of our motion, we're going to wait for you to give us the two recommended names. We can continue and vote on this motion of two Park and Rec people and Ed Mattson as the Board of Selectmen represent. And then we can just double check FOI and Roberts rules to make sure that you're headed in the right direction with that reach back out to the commission.
Jean, you need to change your motion because your motion was one member at large and one Park and Rec member.
Okay. So I'm going to retract my motion to make it nice and clean.
Before you make the motion, I would just like to say, this is one thing that Chris and I wanted. We wanted to know sort of who the committee was going to be before we made a motion to form a committee. Because in the past, I had some questions over who was on the hiring committee for other things. And without the selectmen knowing who's on the committee, I think we should know who is on the committee ahead of time before we approve a committee. So what we're doing now is if you make a motion now for two people at large from
No, it's not.
We're not going to know who those people are until after they are already chosen.
But they're not members at large. Members at large mean.
No, I know. Park and Rec people, any, anybody in general. I think we should know who the committee is. Not what we're, that's what I thought this meeting was going to be for, was to vote on who was going to be on this committee to hire a park director.
You know, guys, this shouldn't be that hard. Lynn, you have three people who volunteered, correct?
Yes.
You're the chair. You can decide which two sit on the committee. If you could do that now, that would be great. And you just explain to the other person, they'll be on another committee at some other time. Does that make sense?
Sure.
At it, girl. All right. Let's get this rolling. Who's on?
John Grant. And Julia Neff.
Okay. And Ed Mattson?
And Ed Mattson.
That helpful, Jean, to be able to have those three named?
Sure. So I'll make a motion to create Park and Rec Director Hiring Subcommittee with the members that have just been stated, Joyce, the three.
I'll second that.
Any further? All those in favor? Thanks. So I have reservations moving forward with creating these subcommittees for these other positions where we don't have, we don't have this policy in place. And I, I don't know, I'm sort of of the opinion that we should, we should be working on the policy and, and getting that squared away. Chris.
So in the past, and all I can do is speak to the past, in the past, we have the selectmen have set up this system. So policy or not, we can actually say this is what we're doing. It's not outside of the policy. It's just sort of part of the policy procedures that, that, you know, we are developing. If you want to then put it into a policy, actually, you know, written policy, I think that's fine. But I don't think we're going to get really any committees going if we're going to wait for a policy change, because that policy change won't come till September. Hi, Deb.
Can I ask a question or sort of make a statement? I've been doing this for close to 30 years, have hired various assistants. And it's a part-time office. I'm an elected official. I set my own office hours. This has never been a problem. Can I just go ahead and hire a part-time assistant for a part-time job within the salary that's in my budget?
You can do, you could do that, sure. But that's not what we want.
But it's, you should have told me that.
I know, I know.
Before, it's just, I've only got, this is the last quarter of the year. There is a lot to do to train someone for the present work, not to mention to train them for the July 1st work. You're pushing. And I would like to get this done. It's worked in the past. Nobody has sued me yet. Maybe they will now. But let's take a chance of, let's just get moving on this. June 30th is fast approaching.
Debbie, it's not really about getting sued, although Randy would probably disagree with me. It's about going through a fair and equitable process for a municipal government position for anyone. And that hasn't been done in the past. It's been, you know, sometimes a Subcommittee, sometimes a straight hire, sometimes an interview process, sometimes, well, I handpicked this person. And it's, it's, it's not, it hasn't been a fair and equitable process, which we really should have a fair and equitable process.
So you just want it advertised, right? That's, that's what this equitable, that would make it equitable? What else do you need to make it equitable?
Consistency is equitable.
Well, I'm being consistent with what I've done for 30 years. So.
But you're not, you're not, so it's not you, it's us. We're not consistent. So in trying to bring it to some, some consistency, that's what we're trying to do. And, and I think it's, it is unfortunate that, that you're in the throes of it. Lynn's also in the throes of it.
Well, she's not an elected official. There's a difference here. Have you talked to Randy about this? I, that's why I would like a legal opinion.
Unless it says somewhere in the Connecticut general statutes that you're allowed to hire whomever you want, I think we need to, why?
You're actually not hiring them, Debbie.
Right. They're a town.
I am presenting someone for you to hire.
I get that.
I will present someone who is quite capable.
Can I make one statement, Debbie? I think you're going to find that what, what my whole big, it has nothing to do with the different groups. It would just be like to know for the townspeople to know and the selectmen to know who is going to be, who is on the selection committee for the future dates. And I'm not saying a committee is going to give you a hard time. I think the process is going to move along just as fast. Maybe one meeting, you present after we advertise who the people are. And it could go through very quickly. I don't think, but it's nice to have continuity of a committee. So all the other committees in town know what's being done rather than in the past.
That's fine, Ed. Can we then just set the committee, the three of us, Jen, you and me? Let's set it. Let's get this in the advertise. Let's get moving.
Right. And I, I don't think that would.
Make a motion.
So we made, sorry, I'm just going back to the.
It was Jen Dubray.
Previous meeting. And it was for, right, for the tax collector's assistant, we actually made a motion to create this hiring Subcommittee that was Debbie, Ed and Jen Dubray to implement the hiring process and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Seconded and it was carried.
So can we officially start the process?
Yes.
Yes. I think we can.
Okay.
I think, I think actually.
Add in, or does Joyce, who runs the ad?
Well, I need to put together a blurb for the website and for Indeed and for the newsletter with the job description.
And can you do that?
I will do my best to do it when we hang up the Zoom call.
And then it, why are you running it in Indeed when this is in the past, only talking about the past, it's been limited to people who live in Kent, simply because this is an elected office. To train someone from out of town to me is a waste of money. And it's taxpayer money we're spending. I find it better to train.
Debbie, what's, what's the difference between hiring an assistant for planning and zoning or for the town clerk or whatever?
This is an elected position.
Well, the elected position is the town clerk. Tell me why? Give me a reason why the town clerk's assistant should be from Kent.
Because in, if, if and when the person in charge retires, moves on, does whatever, if you have someone trained who is local, who is, it's not as if trade certified tax collectors, you can find on every street quarter. It's best if you train someone and have them available.
So then we don't have to have a hiring committee. I got your logic.
Well, no, it's not a hiring. It's, it's called an election.
No, it's. It, no, Debbie, I disagree with you respectfully. I think that, that we need to find somebody who's capable and confident to be able to do it. If we can train them to be that, that's great. But they will then be up for the same hiring process that we're going to give an equitable chance to anybody.
Okay.
And I think that's what we're trying to rein in here. And I, and, and I, and I again appreciate the fact that, that you unfortunately are right there at that precipice of why we're trying to make this consistency. I will go as far as saying, I don't think this is new because Ed, I mean, Jeff, Bruce and I had subcommittees for hiring. Not all, but we did.
Not all.
Not all, but we did.
So we're just trying to continue to align that.
So let's get this thing taken care of. Debbie, you can run.
Put the ad in. Let's.
Add in. Who's responsible for that?
She said she was.
Let's get somebody next.
Board of Finance Clerk.
Board of Finance Clerk. Have we set something up for that?
We made a motion to create the Subcommittee that was the Board of Finance Chair. Uh, the, Chris, you offered to be on it and Barbara Herbst, the treasurer. So we'll.
That's right. And you were going to ask Barbara, remember?
Yep. And we'll get that advertised as well.
Oh, good.
The transfer station manager.
I'm sorry, can we back up a sec? Does, does the Nancy Wirick know this?
Um.
If you could just do me a favor, shoot her an email and tell her that, that we're on in the, in the advertising. And then she's the one that I, you know, I think, I would think she would be the one convening the meeting, but if we have to, we have to. But if you could just send, I think the normal course in all of this should be from the Board of Selectmen. Once people are approved, an email needs to go out to everybody for them to convene.
Yep.
And to Debbie's point, you need to know that the, it's already been advertised. And that we're rolling and.
Yep. I just want to make sure that they all have a charge attached to them. Oh, we did not give a charge to the Park and Rec Subcommittee, but I'll put that in the form of a motion to charge the Park and Rec Subcommittee with the following, to post the position, create interview questions and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen of the most qualified candidate, which is the same exact language from the other subcommittees. Chris, was that you?
Yep.
Anything further? For those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next is the transfer station manager. I'm following up on, from when Barbara talked to the Department of Labor, the way to merge, not merge, but create an appendix, if you will, is to follow the process or follow the model of the land use administrator. So the land use administrator actually encompasses the zoning enforcement officer and the inland wetlands agent position. And so the, the two components are the duties and the compensation. So the duties would be encompassed basically by adding a statement to the bottom of the highway foreman's job description that reads effective today with the, or with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, the duties of the road foreman will encompass the transfer station manager position. So that's the duties part. And then the salaries part, Barbara said, the salary actually stays out in the budget, stays over with the transfer station. So that when that appendix, if you will, is no longer in play, when Rick leaves the job, that that transfer station manager budget item still stays its own. And that's the way we do it with the land use and the zoning enforcement officer and inland wetlands officer in the budget. the land use and the zoning enforcement officer and inland wetlands officer in the budget. So it aligns with that, with how we made, how we did that process.
So just to recap, what we're talking about is actually taking, at least for the, the, in the short terms to, so we have a manager is to take this and, uh, use that appendice to, uh, be able to put it under the, uh, uh, roles and responsibility of the supervisor of the highway.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, do we, uh, so one, we can do it. Two, do we wanna put a term on it?
We can, yeah, we can either. Uh, we can do it, uh, on an annual basis. So at the end of the fiscal year. Or we can do it, um, we'd have to likely go into executive session, which is not on this special agenda. Um, but we would probably, unless, um, Rick wanted to do it in open session to talk about, um, those kinds of details, we might wanna.
Well, I, rather than talk about the personalities, I think we, we just need to talk about the roles and responsibilities in the department. So whomever is the supervisor of the highway department, at this point, we are considering
Yep.
ducking that under as a responsibility and therefore compensating that, that, that individual for it. In, so the question, the question I have is twofold. One, if we are doing this, much like we are exploring getting an interim for the park and recreation, would it be prudent to, at that point, still consider hiring a manager and keeping that open or not? Is, is the first question, because, you know, if going forward, we find somebody that, that pops up, I'm gonna make it up in September. Would it be smart to be able to consider that? One. Two, if not, if we're just gonna put a term and a time on it, let's do that. Let's just say from, you know, fiscal year this to fiscal year that. Uh, if that, if that makes sense to, to you guys. Um, because what we're, what we've in, in, in backing up to explain to those who weren't part of our, our other, other conversations, we're having a challenge because we don't have any ideal applicants for the transfer station manager. And because of that, we have pivoted, I think is what we decided to, to, to explore of which you've given us good information, Gene, to be able to pivot into possibly ducking this under another department. And being able to sort of get through at least the, the interim and the challenges that, that are facing us. That, that's, that's a recap, correct?
Yep.
You agree, Ed?
Yes, yep.
So what's your, what's your thinking, Ed, on on whether we keep this as sort of a, uh, you know, timeframe, or do we keep it, keep the uh, keep looking for an operations manager in, in the interim? What's your thought?
I think we should keep looking, but I, because I think the, I think the fiscal, fiscal term sounds good also, but we haven't decided anything on compen- compensation yet either. How many hours, what's gonna require a week? So I, I don't see how we can really.
Well, it's in the budget.
Yeah, but we're not just gonna hand him the budget because we're not, we're not, because we've already discussed, you already said he doesn't, he's not required to be there the two days. He's, he can come and go, or I'm not saying that, you're saying the transfer station manager last, the other, at the other meeting, you said the transfer station manager isn't required to be there both days. They can come and go as they please.
Well, not that they can come and go as they please, but there's no requirement that that person has to be on site.
No requirement, period. That was basically what you said, so. And we didn't really advertise it as that.
Well, I think you're getting ahead of yourself, Ed, because we didn't really decide anything. What we just, what we, what we talked about, I believe, is pivoting. That pivoting was going to take the responsibilities of the, the manager and put them in another department.
Right, which is perfectly.
We also, what we also talked about is it would have to be renumeration for that individual who was taking on that responsibility. But, but because it was basically going to be an adjunct to their responsibilities, it wouldn't be a full compensation like an operations manager. However, however, there would also be no expectation for the most part of, you know, be, having to require that individual to be there at all hours, but really to be responsible for managing the individuals or the attendance.
Correct.
So if we're, if we're all on the same page, that that's how it happens, all we have to decide is how many hours it's going to take and how much, how much, how much overseeing time it will take to get a proper system rolling there.
Right.
And I don't, because I don't use that transfer station, I don't have a clue. Uh, but I'm looking to others who can help us understand how many hours are we talking? And when are we talking?
Right, uh, that's what, well, that's kind of what I was trying to say. Right.
So what's your thought? How many hours are, are needed to be able to have a manager? Whether it's, whether it's under Park and Rec or whether it's under the treasurer or whether it's a board of selectmen member, how many hours is it gonna take that, for that individual to manage? If they have two, hopefully two good attendants.
So in theory, um, and, you know, Rick has been working in there a lot on the weekends to help everybody supplement. Um, so he has decent input here, so Rick, by all means, please be part of the conversation. Um, I would say definitely the opening and the closing to deal with the, the startup money and the accounting at the end of the day. Um, you know, there's gonna be times of year where, that are cyclical as far as, um, if we're closed, if Christmas ends up falling on a Sa- on a Sunday, which means we would open on a Monday, and if we didn't have enough transfer station attendance so that, you know, so this person would need to step in to cover, you know, to be that second person. So there's a, you know, there's sort of, there's some variables that are kind of unknown. But I would say definitely the startup and the, the close of the day, so that's likely we'll call in an hour at each end of the day.
That's not gonna be enough.
No, I know that. Um, that's just a, the, a baseline. Um, you know, we have a new program with the glass that needs a lot of, um, tending to and guidance to the public as we educate them. So I think, you know, if anything, it would, it would be more hours now and then um, you know, level off after another couple of months.
Uh, in a couple of months, you'll be selling tickets and a lot of that will fall on them, so.
You know, there's an up and down. So it's approved for, um, for the current year. For seventeen hours a week. And they, she's got an average of forty-eight weeks.
Well, seven hours a week is, is what, two weekends?
Seventeen hours a week.
I'm sorry, seventeen hours a week.
Working both days, full.
So working full to six hours, seven hours? Well, is it all there?
Three thirty, but you gotta set up and take downs.
Right.
I also, wasn't there some hours during the week when no one's around? You have to do stuff?
That's what that extra hour is for calling in the downstairs and.
Right.
It's only one hour.
Right, so that's being there when, you know, if one of the vendors or haulers needs to get into the gate, uh, you know, ad hoc tidying up, but a lot of that has been taken care of. So fairly minimal.
You know, again, uh, uh, having not really used it significantly, but I've been over there. Do we really need three people all the time over there? It seems to me that you would just have, I mean, and I don't mean this, I'm not besmirching anybody, but every time I've gone over there, there was two guys in a hut and one guy walking around doing stuff. Now, maybe it's just bad timing for Chris Garrity going over there, and it certainly wasn't daily or weekly, but I just wanna, I'm, I'm really wondering why we can't streamline this. Where you have a manager who pops in and out and you have two attendants who are actually hopping around and doing the stuff, opening things, taking tickets, doing that. Again, help me, somebody help me here in terms of understanding the full perspective of the work, but it seems to me that that might be able to be streamlined.
So the baseline is there's a co-mingle compactor that needs to be managed, meaning looking, you know, making sure that people are putting the right stuff in, picking out the stuff that's wrong because there's a whole, you know, if we, if they get in, they get sort of contaminated loads, it's gonna be a problem. You know, there, we'll get fined.
So can I stop you a sec? Someone sits there and does that all day long?
Yep.
Okay, it's not in my experience, but.
Of the two, I would say the co-mingle, um, compactor is much more, much busier because there's more to do. Um, whereas the, the municipal solid waste compactor, you still need to be pressing the button and making sure that, you know, people haven't poured their, you know, missed the hole and poured their garbage onto the ground below, but it needs, it doesn't need as much attention, but, um, one person, because of how it's laid out, you couldn't have one person running back and forth or running across traffic and people often, you know, are not paying much attention when they're, we're, and they're driving the loop.
Okay.
So, you know, the safety piece, and then they're also, um, guiding people to paint. Um, that's a sort of notorious place where sneaky stuff gets dropped off and it's usually hazardous waste, which we don't accept at the transfer station, but that's how, that's a lot of times where we've seen hazardous waste show up. Um, and then when you think about it, we really should be checking tickets, you know, checking permits. But there's, you know, there's not enough time when it's just one person, if it were just one person on each compactor, because they're doing more than just um, just standing at the compactor. There, you know, if somebody brings a mattress, they're gonna help with the mattress. If somebody brings in bulky, they are gonna, they go get the fee schedule and they go and show the person the fee schedule, because that's the new process to make sure that it's fair to say, okay, you have half a pickup truck load of debris and it's this much and they do the, the money exchange. So it's not just standing at a compactor or, um, standing, you know, in the hut when there's nobody there.
Right, so to answer my question, you need three people there.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the, the optimal number of people. Because if you take that third person and do they need to be there for all sixteen hours? I'm not sure. Rick, what are your, what are your thoughts?
Most weekends, yes. And if you decide to open part-time during the week, that would change things, so you you'll probably cut down less traffic on the weekends.
Right. That would.
Definitely wouldn't need three people during the weekday if you did open that way.
Right. It would definitely be a relief valve for the weekends to do even half a day during the week.
Right, but right now, we're just talking about what we have in front of us. And so, uh, help me here. If, if, if it is truly believed that we need three people on site, then why, why and how can we consider ducking this under for a management's position if we're then just gonna be shy a guy or a person, I should say?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean, Chris.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I think if three bodies have to be there, or it's optimal that three bodies are there because of, as Gene has just outlined. Right?
Yep.
Then there's no way that we can put it under the current highway department purview or even ever, because we have a conflict or there is a potential conflict of time restraint on that individual. Does that make sense?
Why would there be a time?
Only during, uh, if, like we discussed at the other meeting, if it happened during a snowstorm or.
Right, but, but that's, that's fundamentally the problem, why we don't have an ideal candidate is because if we put it under the highway department, it ends up, um, you know, there's a conflict, whether it's you, Rick, or, or me or whomever who runs the department, because on a Saturday or Sunday or any time, that could be uh, something where your primary responsibilities draw you away from this, this situation. So either we come up with a hybrid situation whereby we put this under the highway department, compensate that, you know, the, the head of that department for management of two people to be doing, you know, working, and I don't know whether it's a meeting in the morning, an hour or so, or however that, that, those, those hours are dibbied up, but, um, if we can conceive of, we're talking seventeen hours, I think is what, what the manager, you said presently has. If you give them, um, seven hours to run that and the other ten hours, those people are on their own doing things, is that feasible?
Chris, how does that diff- how is that different than an average person who perhaps has a family emergency and they can't make it there? If he's not there because of a current responsibility, A, either the place wouldn't be open because it's weather related or B, the other guys would be there, but it's not like the, the pre- the past managers haven't taken vacations or sick days. We're talking a handful of days that there might be a conflict for him, and anybody you hire is gonna have conflicts. I think you're reading way too much into it. We're talking a handful of days.
No, we're talking about an employee who has two different town jobs. So that's like you, Joyce, if you're on a salary and it's your time, but you're also doing something outside.
I do. I do. I work for the town and I work for the sewer. Are there times that I may have to answer a sewer question during my town time? Absolutely. But I make it up or I manage it. It works. I mean, I think it's a minimal situation. That's just my opinion.
Well, your opinion's valued.
This past one, we only had one actual transfer station person there. After, uh, the other one was let go. So the weekends, it did storm. Instead of having the, my normal people working up there, I left them at the, doing the road work and I helped out up to the transfer station, because
Right.
Because I'm getting salary anyway, so that, if they've been up there, they will have been drawing the overtime from the transfer stations to the been out plowing, but if this storm is bad enough that I can't be there, but you do have two other people, I'm sure that during the storms, those two other people can handle it fine, because
Right.
the volume of people coming to it, it's not gonna be there.
Right, you're gonna have reduced usage, and we do have, you know, there's the, the alternative of uh, we have another per diem employee who fills in from time to time, and then there's me. So not that those, not that I'm, uh, you know, the optimal backstop, but I'm a body that can, you know, come in and help out in those few times that, you know, that he may need to be off running storm stuff. And.
And what's the solution?
So really, we're talking about the number of hours is what's at play, right?
Well, I, I don't understand.
Twenty-four, then we're done right now.
Say that again, Rick?
If you wanna tell me, I actually have twenty-five years instead of twenty-four, that I could eat my benefits and I'll go right to the transfer station. It's one year we're talking about.
So.
Well, is there another solution, please?
So we could, we could do this with the, the, you know, like a time limitation, um, for the fiscal year. And then reauthorize it at the end, you know, in, at the June meeting for the following fiscal year.
When we, when we originally had the, wait a minute, see if I'm on mute. No, I'm not. When we originally, uh, put out the job on Indeed for this position, did it say just manager? Didn't have hours, anything, nothing at all?
No, it had, um, oh, had the job description. Does the job description have the number of hours? Joyce, do you recall? I'd have to go out on Indeed and look.
I believe it did have the number of hours.
Because maybe now there'd be a lot more people applying if they knew they didn't have to be there. It, but five hours a day or whatever. I don't, it, I, Mercy, I think we're gonna end up in trouble. I mean, if the job's supposed to be for sixteen hours a week, and it pays, what's, what was the job considered paying per hour? Did we have an hourly rate on that? Nineteen something?
It's twenty dollars and ninety cents.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And thanks. Um, in, in order for the transfer station to operate, does it need a permit?
We are.
And does that permit require a certain number of people to be there in order to provide a safe work environment? And shouldn't you be working, looking at that permit to see what it's saying, if there is one? I was under the impression that there was one.
Yeah, it's, um, I think it's a minimum of two.
Yep. It is, that it is.
Because you can't have just one, because that's just, that would be an OSHA violation, I'm sure, under a safety, those, those conditions.
And because there were, what, seven hundred and fifty permits that were sold last year? I think that's what the number was.
Something like that.
That they need, you need three.
Yeah, because the increased.
Number of permits, with the new people coming in and the new people using the transfer station instead.
Yep.
So on an average day, they're seeing close to four hundred, you know, and one day they might be seeing four hundred and another day they might be seeing only three. But that's four hundred cars that are coming in and out of there and need to be directed and helped. And so the three people really are necessary in order to run transfer station of that size.
Well, I think is, is your question, well, I'm hearing a lot of surmising. If there is a permit and that permit has a requirement of a certain number of car counts, we need to know that. If that requirement of car counts is equated to a certain number of bodies, we need to know that too. Because then we can't do part-time. We can't do so many, you know, half-hours, which is, gets back to the question, if indeed, again, I'm not a user, but those who use it, if indeed we need three bodies at all of that time, and there's also a permit requirement for it, again, that, that, that outlines very clearly and dictates what, what you can and cannot do.
I'm pretty sure it's at least two.
I don't think you're gonna find that in the permit.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's like a reference to safety, but I don't think it's, it prescribes number of, number of, uh, operators.
What is required is somebody be certified there.
Right.
Right.
And who is certified there now? Rick, you are, right?
It's me. That's currently working.
For free.
Basically.
Yep. Um, it's, I mean, this document is like, I don't know, fifty pages or something.
All right. Well, just to get clarity, it's a good question, uh, with.
I don't think we need to go in the weeds on that, because you can't, it can't be operated by one person from a safety standpoint. If you have one person there and they fall into a compactor, there's nobody else to have eyes on that worker. So it's gotta be at least two.
That's fine, but that's not.
Is that fair and logical?
That's fair and logical, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about the person who's the manager. And the real question on the table is, can a manager be there part-time or not? It sounds to me, after that was our pivot, it sounds to me, at least from the feedback from people who know this, that that's not as reasonable. So we're back to square one, which is, we need to fill the position. And right in front of us is a, not an ideal candidate, because they presently work for the town and their hours are also during the hours of work, albeit as pointed out by Joyce and by Rick and by everyone else, that there are, uh, times and situations where flexibility comes into play and, and we get that. But, you know, do we want to get ourselves into a position where somebody's supposed to be there as required? But then they're away and then something happens and, you know, because they were pulled away uh, on a Saturday midday because of a storm, and then something happens at the transfer station where the manager isn't there as we have prescribed. Um, you know, it, it just brings a lot of crazy questions into play. That's why it's clean and easier just to find somebody to, to do it. And right now, as, as we've faced, it's just not an ideal situation. Unless we, unless we take those additional hours. So if, I'm, I'm making it up, we have seventeen hours. If seven of those hours are management and there are three people there and they're picking up that other ten hours, you know, maybe that's gonna cover it. But they're also an attendant, so you have three little, three attendants under a manager. But I don't know if that's ideal, because again, I don't know how it operates.
I think I missed the part where so everybody started talking about part-time, because I always assumed those can be there two days.
Right. The issue is not you being there two days. Uh, the, the, the idea was to be a manager and then, and then have the flexibility of not having to be there all the time. Primarily because you're still, you know, as a, as a salary member and the head of the highway department, potentially being pulled one way or another on a weekend. But if that's not the case, are your, are your, is your, is your job responsibility required to work on weekends as well sometimes, Rick?
Yeah, I mean, weather related or if there's a, a tree falls down, I go look at that first, but I was tied up, burning brush one day recently and I got called for a tree down, so I just called one of the guys and they went and checked it and then dealt with it. So just the only difference is that the town's not paying overtime to somebody if I go do it.
Well, that's, you know, my point on that. It doesn't matter. That's what we have to do. We have to do.
So can I ask a question? So right now, then, if Rick decided not to show up on Saturday, the transfer station wouldn't open because there's no one certified to open it?
No, we have a letter on file with deep saying we had, we've had a, we've had staffing shortages and there's something in the permit that says if you have, you, you have to notify deep and let them know. But we've been, Rick has been there pretty much every weekend so that we do have someone. And, and part of the problem was that with COVID, they suspended all of their, um, transfer state or transfer station operator courses. So that was the, um, you know, there, there's been no course. They have a course, I think we're all signed up this Thursday, Joyce, to take the online version of, of this course. So at the end of the day on Thursday.
Right. It's just a simple online course, correct?
Oh, no, it's like a four-hour.
Well, yeah, that's not bad.
You used to have to go to Burlington.
Right, right. They, they've created a distance learning version.
There are, there should be a list of people in Kent that act, there's other people in Kent that actually have their transfer station permit, I believe.
Yeah, all the, all the permits, all the certifications are posted in the transfer station shed there.
Right. Um, let's go back to the beginning. We have a candidate in front of us who wants to apply as a manager job. Do, do the three of us see that because that person also holds a job that requires sometimes, and actually probably doesn't even require, because clearly the highway department can call in people for emergencies over, over certain times, right? That is the responsibility.
And I just checked the job description and it does, it says must be available for overtime.
Okay.
At least enough.
So I'm gonna put forward that I asked, I asked you two other selectmen, is it a problem that in the slight conflict of interest, if you will, there's a challenge whereby in the next, you know, next year, if you will, we have a, we have a situation where that conflict is, uh, you know, is a problem. And I'm gonna use a down tree as an example, and it's a Saturday afternoon. If, if indeed Rick makes a call to make sure that that gets taken care of, that's still under the auspices of his job and he could take care of it and still manage the other side of it. Do you guys see that that's a problem? Yes or no?
No.
I don't see it as a problem, as long as he doesn't go to look at it, because then we're not gonna have someone there with a certificate.
We will, because as of Thursday, we're going to have three or four people who will all have.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not gonna be there at the time, though. Are you gonna try to get one of your assistants the permit also then?
Mike Vaca is getting his, is gonna be there on Thursday for the class.
My point is, someone's gonna be there that's a permit.
Ed, it, it, regardless, that, that is, that's a responsibility of the first selectman at that time, who is the overseer of both the manager and the highway department, to make sure however that's covered, it's covered properly.
Yep.
So if, if, if you, if we can put the trust in the first selectman to be able to manage that, is, are you okay with it?
Yep.
Okay. I make a motion that we hire Rick Osborne as a transfer station manager.
Second.
Um, there needs to be an effective date and a salary.
Right.
Let me amend that. Make a motion that we hire Rick Osborne as the transfer station manager as budgeted in the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget line for the manager.
Effective.
Uh, effective immediately. Uh, and to be renewed, uh, on the fiscal year, July first, two thousand twenty-one.
Second. Did we cover all the bases, Joyce?
I believe so.
Any questions, Ed?
Don't we have to do the budget from twenty to twenty-one and then twenty-one to twenty?
We'll have to.
We'll have to do that again.
Get a reauthorize him in June for the following fiscal year.
Right. Okay, that's fine. So till June, it's gonna come out of the twenty, twenty, correct?
Existing budget.
Yeah, right. I think you said twenty-one, Chris, but in the, on the first number.
He said twenty, twenty, twenty slack.
Twenty-one.
Okay, good, perfect. Okay. Just wanted to make sure, that's all.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
I lost track of my agenda.
Your tenant, no.
Transfer attendant. So we motioned at the last meeting to, um, create a hiring subcommittee of myself, one member of the conservation commission and one resident at large. I have not had a chance to follow up with Connie. And if we want to stick with that, we can stick with that and I'll get right on it. If we want to do something else, we need to make a motion.
Well, now you have a manager. You may want to include him in that.
Thank you, Joyce. So, um, I, I would consider making a motion to, to create, you know, uh, do I, Joyce, do I have to undo that motion or can, how, what's the process? What's the proper way to handle that? Darlene, I see you on the meeting too.
Well, you're talking about, we had a motion that we accepted last time.
Yep.
Right. So we can, we can.
Make another motion?
We can get another motion that, that changes them.
All right, I'll make to amend the transfer station attendant hiring subcommittee to one board of selectmen member, one member of the conservation commission and the transfer station manager.
You need to say names.
The board of selectmen member Gene Speck, I don't have a conservation, um,
Member, yeah.
Member, I mean, we could, sorry, Joyce, I'm gonna retract my motion. We can just discuss this. I can, um, we can put out the name of the chair.
That's fine.
And then, um, and Rick. So that will be my motion, Joyce. To amend the hiring subcommittee to, um, to be myself, which was in there before, the chair of the conservation commission and the transfer station manager, Rick Osborne.
I'll second that. That's good.
Fantastic. Any questions? Any thoughts, Rick, um, Chris?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's it. We'll adjourn at five oh seven. Thanks, everybody, for the thorough conversation. I appreciate it. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you.